Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole for October 16th. Ms. Boeck, if you could please read the roll.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah, here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Here.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Eight members present.
Vice President Garza, we have the minutes from October 2nd.
Thank you, Council President. With that, I'd move the October 2nd minutes as written.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes unanimously. This is the opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment, please come up to the podium and state your name for the record. Is there anyone here that...
Okay, you have F. on your agenda tonight, the report on the cost of warming and cooling centers follow-up. I don't know about you folks, but I think I can recognize when somebody is dragging their feet and really doesn't want to pursue something and really doesn't want to see anything come of it. And to further that thought, there was a request for a proposal in the newspaper the other day on the 8th, actually. I forwarded it, well, I tagged every council member that I could tag with it. And it's a RFP request for one warming center at the Lutz Community Center, and it gave an eight-day turnaround time. Now, tell me, how realistic it is for somebody to get a bid in in eight days? That counts weekends, counts a legal holiday. It just does not sound to me like this is something the mayor actually wants to accomplish or that he's listening to and hearing the public and you councilmembers saying one center is not enough. There has to be one in each area. If there isn't actually a community center in Ward 2, it needs to be near Ward 2. Foster would probably work pretty well for most of the residents of Ward 2. But there needs to be a center. It needs to be fast, it needs to be safe, it needs to be equally distributed across the city because most of the people that will need it will not be able to get from their homes to one location in the city when a need arises. So please be aware that this sounds to me like stonewalling. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good evening. Good evening. Michael Lynn. A couple things. I guess what she said also, it does feel like they're kicking the can down the road, but we know that. So I just guess, I ask what you all can do about it because we know what's happening. And I think that's what has to happen, is the council and the community have to find their voice and make some change here. Otherwise, this is just going to be another winter. Outside of that, the ordinances for HRCS, obviously you know how I stand on that. We don't need to change anything right now. Again, maybe looking into the charter about things that need to change, giving them more power. But I also would like for you guys to end some resolution on this and not kick it down the road till there's a new council here that they can come back in and bring this to. So place it on file, be done with it, get it out the way. Secondary to that, Human Resources Department is here, good. I hope you guys dig into some questions about why the city seems to be in support of our fire department when it's election season, in support of our police department when they're going against to fund the police. But we've given, I believe, $50 million a year to the police department. They still don't have what they need to do the job, more than likely because they don't have the people they need to do the job. And that falls back on Human Resources about not being able to hire. So get to the bottom of that. What is the reason why? And I guess if there's going to be excuses, which we've heard every time they've been dragged in here, then ask the mayor to find somebody else that doesn't have those excuses. We have to start moving past the excuses, the continuously, "This is a problem across the country." We don't want to hear that any longer. You guys get paid way too much money not to have a visionary mind to get these things done. You know, I was here two years ago asking to defund the police. We didn't get that. Y'all got the money, now do something with it, plainly. And I think the council, you already begin to have them in a position to ask those questions, demand some furtherance on those things. Aside from that, ethics complaint, we're going to be filing that here soon. We came up here, talked about it many times. You all pulled motions to find an outside attorney. The case has gotten even stronger at this point with some of the things we've brought through with the very limited FOIA request that we got. My biggest thing is that the whole world knows what happened here. We all watched the disparate treatment of how they treated Jeffrey Brown. You all watched it. This is not on the onus of the city community to pull this forward, although we are going to put it forward. But we need those watchful eyes of the six individuals that signed it. We will bring it back to you revised because there's much more now. Very apparent ethics violations, probably as Jim Smurka has mentioned, some financial stuff with the campaign finance stuff that we didn't add in there, but if campaign finance was to look at it, they could probably pull some of that out. We're going to file it. We don't know what the outcome will be going through this kangaroo court that we know they're waiting on it to come to, but I'm hoping this council stands tall and makes sure this thing gets its just due process. But ultimately, on the end of that, is that if we can't find to hold our elected officials accountable in the very easily way that is, why would anybody follow your ethics or your ordinances? I mean, this is all very polarized, and the highest guard is doing this. So if we can't hold accountability on him, then who deserves to have accountability held?
Thank you.
I, too, just kind of, I guess, want to voice support. I think everyone knows the warming and cooling centers have a whole lot of support in the community. I think what Loretta said is, it's difficult to, every two weeks, kind of watch the process. And it's been a really long process of even just having formidable discussions that are tied to actual action items and then a timeframe in conjunction with that. That is really frustrating, and we're in October. It's not only frustrating, it's scary because it's already cold right now. So at night, it's already getting too cold for individuals that don't have any other option but to be on the streets. And so just in about a month or two, it's now going to be deadly. And that was always our goal, and that's why the People's Council of Lansing, America 20 to Life, all of us and the people in the community started this conversation early because we didn't want to get to this point where we still didn't have any solutions. So I think that's the toughest part for me. I did send over information about looking into trying to use and leverage existing resources in the community. If there is no accountability to be held on prolonging how long it looks like it's going to take to get something up and running, then why are we not looking into how we leverage our existing community members? And I don't just mean by a school that we have that's sitting there or a community center, so that Jerry from the fledge doesn't get another letter telling him he can't do what he feels like he needs to do to save lives in our community. We need to be able to empower and educate our community. If they have a space they want to be able to use, use the plan that I sent you that's used in Alaska. It's very, it's something that we can take parts of if we can't do the entire thing. So I just urge again, where there is a will, there is a way, and we should have a lot more will on saving people's lives during the Michigan winter than we're showing that we have a way to right now. Second to that, the HRCS, I mean, I think I've talked to them blue in the face on, I cannot imagine why we would want to strip any duties, any power, anything like that from a committee that's so important when it comes to the people. I think that the conversation even being brought up and put forth this far says a whole lot on relationship with the community and trust. It's one avenue that I think is important for people to have several avenues when it comes to discrimination-type complaints. That is one of them. They are a very intricate and important part of the community feeling like they have a voice, and trying to stifle that in any way makes no sense to me. I would say, you know, last but not least, as far as the ethics complaint, it is going to be filed. I don't feel like we have a choice but to move forward with it. I will go on record to say I don't have any trust in the process it has to go through, but knowing that everyone is involved, like, knows that there are violations or at least potential violations, I was hoping that it would at least get put back on the agenda to look for an outside attorney, was already discussed and decided upon. But since that isn't, we will just move forward.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? If there is, if you'd please come to the podium. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we'll move into our first presentation, and that is Ms. O'Leary and her deputy for our Human Resource Department. And while Ms. O'Leary is getting situated at the table, I do want to make a couple of comments first and foremost. The last time we had some department people before us, this body was accused of being argumentative, harassing, and downright rude to the department people that were here. I think the problem that we have is that there are questions that we want to make sure are answered, and I think, based on the fact that we have received a number of questions from the public, our constituents, from employees, that when we ask those questions, sometimes our tenor is because of the frustration that we have with that. So what I would encourage us to do is to make sure that we allow Elizabeth, Ms. O'Leary, enough time to answer her question before we ask follow-up questions. But I do not want to stifle this council from asking the questions that they believe are important, not only to them, but to the constituents that they represent. So having said that, I want to make sure that we're starting off on an even playing field and everybody understands what to expect at this point. So with that, Elizabeth, I think one of the things that we'd like you to do is if you could go give us an overall view of your department and the hiring processes, and then what we'll do is open it up for council questions to follow up with that. So Ms. O'Leary.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity. I got a list of questions from Ms. Boeck, and so the first question was the hiring practices of the city. I would note that it varies on the applicable position. A general overview of the process is that the department notifies HR that they're wanting to fill a position, and a requisition is submitted in NeoGov. The specialists will then reach out to the department representative and schedule a kickoff meeting. This meeting consists of getting all the details, such as the panel members, the postings, any assessments that need to be done, any language that needs to be updated from the job descriptions. Based on the kickoff, there may be a need to make updates and edits to the job description. If there is a substantive change to the job, it will need to go to our classification consultant. This is pursuant to our collective bargaining agreements. After it goes to the classification consultant, the info is updated in the system and it's posted on NeoGov and other websites. Once the posting closes, applications are screened, and those who meet the basic minimum qualifications are sent to the hiring manager. The hiring managers make comments on the applicants, and then assessments dependent on the position are conducted. This could vary from online assessments, written assessments, skills demonstrations. Interviews with a diverse panel are conducted, and we use a consensus scoring model. Once the scores are totaled, the HR specialist sends a hiring manager a recommendation correspondence for the recommended candidate. Conditional offers are then sent out, and a salary negotiation may commence based upon experience. Once a conditional offer is accepted, the background checks, pre-employment physicals, reference checks are done. Backgrounds vary depending on the position, and some positions require psychological evaluations. The candidate is also sent to preboarding, onboarding, and to start paperwork, and it's added to the orientation schedule. So this is a basic, high-level overview. Each position may have a different process that's contained within it. The second question I got was the timeline from start, from when a department requested. Is it verbal or in writing to completion? Dependent on the position and many other factors, such as background checks, giving notice to another employer, because generally people give a two-week notice, we currently are assessing the various processes to ensure we're taking advantage of any potential efficiencies that have been created. I also want this council to know how skilled and exceptional the members of our team are. This is much more complex than putting, just putting a posting up on a website. The hiring of city employees touches every single area of HR, and the members of our team are dedicated and are working hard to, in the best interest of the city, with the best interest of the city in the forefront of their minds. So this could be anywhere from three months to six months, dependent on the position and all the different levels that you have to go through for posting. The third question was, is the HRCS DEI officer involved in the hiring process, hiring, postings, et cetera? What role do they play in the hiring process, and if not, why? My understanding is that the previous DEI officer has sat on panels. The hiring process and postings are not currently reviewed by the DEI officer in HRCS. It's something on our radar that we explore as we explore modifications to the hiring process as to how to include this role. The hiring process, I will note that the hiring process, we're undergoing like a review of it. I have a new director, Kyla Moore, deputy director. That is, it's key on her list to review every step of these processes. And there's many different types of processes for many different types of positions. The list of, the next question was a list of vacancies in the HR department and our plan to fill them. We have the Health and Wellness Tech, which is undergoing the classification process with our consultant, and the job description is being developed currently. This will be posted in the next month. The Retirement Tech has gone through the classification process and will be posted this month. We had one new HR specialist start today. That was an internal promotion, which will create a vacancy in our payroll tech position. We have another hiring specialist that starts on Monday, the 23rd, and then the payroll tech position will be reclassified, and we're targeting mid-November to early December for posting. The next question was, is the OCA Legal Counsel advised during applications, interviews, and filling of positions? And it gave the example of the Commission Investigator. OCA is not involved in the hiring process unless there's a specific question that HR raises to them. I've been made aware of the issue regarding the HRCS investigator position, and we will be mindful in the future of this specific situation.
Okay, we'll open it up for questions. Who has a question? Councilmember, or Vice President Garza, and then Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, Council President. So I hear that you guys are looking over the process. Have you guys came up with anything right now that could speed up the process that you identified? I mean, three to six months just seems like a long time, and, you know, I'd hate to lose out on, you know, a potential candidate that found employment sooner.
Yes, we have found some potential, and we've implemented several things in the last couple of months with respect to police hiring. We've had, we've been doing several phases at the same time, and getting to those interviews, especially for those laterals, very, very quickly. So this is something that, Kyla started in June of this year, and there's lots of different pieces to this. But we also want to make sure that we are protecting the city and working in the best interest of the city in hiring practices and best practices.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Now, has there been a review of what other municipalities, for instance, let's say the police department? You know, we know we're down quite a bit of officers. Have we reviewed other municipalities, maybe the same size of Lansing, and see if we are competitive with the wages?
We can do, I mean, I think we've looked, and I think this last contract that we've done really hit, made a boost in our, the desirability to come to Lansing. The 3% multiplier, which you guys ratified, is a big improvement. So I think we are competitive. I think we're getting those lateral people. They're coming in. We had 19 start in August recruits. We have 12 slated to start in January that we're going through vetting. This is a, it's a every-all-hands-on-deck situation. I don't want to speak for the police chief, but both of our teams are working, working hard. If we have a lateral come in, we're rearranging schedules and trying to get those interviews done and get trying to, we're pushing on our background investigators to get things done quickly. We've pushed on other vendors to get things more expeditious, so...
Okay, I appreciate that. Last question.
Okay.
When you spoke about all the different processes, you mentioned, I think you said reclassification, you want to make sure all that's in order. Now, is that something that could be, should be done prior to when it hits you guys?
So that's something that our team handles. So our hiring specialists, not only do they hire, but they also do reclassifications, and this is a lengthy process, and it's pursuant to our CBA, so I'm happy to speak a little bit more on that process. A job description questionnaire is developed by the incumbent or the department head or the representative. It is a, I don't know, 15 to 20-page document that examines a job. So that then goes to a desk audit with our HR specialist. The HR specialist sit with the incumbent, and they go through a day in the life, and they take notes, they review the desk audit to make sure they're capturing everything that the incumbent is telling them. From there, they develop the notes, they send it back to the incumbent. The incumbent then reviews, and it's sent off to SEAGUL. SEAGUL determines the classification based upon other comparable positions. And so this is a whole nother thing that our specialists do. They don't just do hiring. They meet with employees on processes, they review job descriptions, they make edits to job descriptions, they develop interview questions. So this is a very lengthy, and it's a lengthy process that takes a lot of skill.
All right, well, thank you.
I have Councilmember Cost, Councilmember Brown, and Councilmember Hussein, and Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Council President. So, and I heard him ask about the three to six months, Councilmember Garza, have you guys reached out to the state government at all to see how they hire folks? And I ask that because I'm a state employee that's been through the process. To get into the state government when I was initially hired, everything that needed to be done was done, and I was on the job in less than a month and a half.
So, I'd like to introduce Kyla Moore. She is actually a former HR individual that worked with the state. So she's well versed on the state practices, and so that's been being taken into consideration. And I don't know that that's necessarily a reasonable timeframe.
I, maybe we're confused. I, I'm hoping that when you say three to six months, I'm hoping that means from the time you hear from the director to the kickoff meeting to the, all the way through the posting process and the generation of applicant pool and the testing and all of that. Because we do know that across industries, whether we're talking public or private, from posting to hiring, the average time is about three to six weeks. So I think we're talking about potentially two different windows of effort. Am I, we're not just talking from posting to hiring is three to six months.
I'm talking about...
You're talking the whole...
Request, whole process, whole process.
So some of the behind-the-curtain work that has to happen, prior to, as an example, Councilman Cost applying for that job, that's the three, four months prior to that, you know, we don't see. I guess what I'm interested in knowing, and I think, Councilman Cost, what is the average time from post to actual hire?
It depends on what position you have. It varies.
Okay, but we still should have, we are still an entity, right, the City of Lansing, and so we should still have an average time across departments. Have we studied that?
We would have to look at specific positions. I mean, if a police, that's an academy person, it's going to be different from a lateral. Like, we've gotten laterals in in a month and a month to the half, a month and a half. But when there's, I mean...
And I can understand that. Look, oh, I'm sorry, there was somebody else before me.
Okay, so I've got Councilmember...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to hijack the meeting.
So in any, I guess I'm curious, in terms of a few things, how many employees, you talked about vacancies, how many employees do we have right now in HR?
15.
15.
That are FTEs.
So we have 15 FTE.
I've also hired some contract workers to help with the load on hiring specialists, temporary workers.
Okay.
Just for hiring.
Which is, so for an entity our size, that is probably actually right where we want to be, correct? You're looking at, what, 1.5 per 100 employees? That's roughly what we have?
I mean, I'm not going to...
I think that's roughly what it is. Well, I think it's important because of all the things you do and all the different areas you support, and the fact that every single shop in every single department across the City of Lansing is touched by HR. I think we do need to know what best practice is and whether or not, from a funded level, we are there. If we're not, I would, I guess another thing I'm curious about is from your department, I know you guys are rather new, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Frankly, I'll just say, I know you walked into a bit of a mess. That being said, I am curious to know whether or not HR has routinely requested, in their budget requests to the administration, additional positions that have not been honored in the recommended budget to council.
I will continue to say that we need more staff people. We have several positions that there is one person that does the job. And our priority list on getting these HR positions filled has been on the people that have, to have that succession planning. That is a top priority.
And I appreciate your candor, because a lot of times, folks come down in the well and, you know, we're going to do what we can do with the staff we have. So I appreciate the fact you're saying, you know, no, we really do need some additional folks, and so I'd love to have that conversation with you so that maybe we can do some work on our end to get those positions funded and at some point filled. How many, I guess I'm curious, how many hiring specialists do we have right now?
So we have...
Three.
Three, and a manager. And then we have one starting on Monday.
Okay.
But...
And I guess what I'm trying to get to is, you know, when we talk about, because we, you know, anecdotally, we hear a lot from people. You know, we've applied to the City of Lansing, we've applied to the county, we've applied to, you know, maybe a couple private sector employers, and, you know, we, and I know there's, you know, intricacies that maybe not everybody's considering, but it is alarming when you hear, you know, what, "I applied, interviewed, or tested, interviewed, was offered, and accepted the offer before I even heard from the City of Lansing." And so what we're trying to do is figure out, is this a capacity issue? Is it an oversight and policy process issue? What is, what's going on? Because frankly, and I don't have to tell you this, in today's employee landscape, there's just not enough out there. We already know we struggle at times to offer competitive wages and benefits, so we certainly don't want to be slow in terms of the hiring and in the offer process as well. So we're just trying to get a handle on why, so we can get some of these positions.
And I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate your encouragement and your support. And I will tell you that our specialists have been working their butts off. They want to be there round the clock to fill these positions, but I've told people, like, "Look, you have to have a work-life balance because I want you here. These are skilled individuals that are detail-oriented, and they oversee every step of the process to make sure the city's protected." So that's my, I mean, I think it's a capacity issue with respect to hiring because we have to ensure that our practices are defensible. If we're ever questioned, we want to be able to produce everything and say, "Hey, look, we had a diverse panel. We had questions that were based upon the job description." We stand behind our processes, and we are looking at them to see what efficiencies we can make, but this is, I mean, this is of utmost importance to the city to protect the city's interest. And I'm sorry, I'm a little passionate about this.
Councilmember Cost, did you want to finish up your questioning?
Yeah, so, and I'm just curious, right now, how many openings do we have?
You mean vacant positions or openings in HR? Which are we talking about?
I'm sorry, vacant positions.
So the last vacancy list had 162 on it. We have 23, 25 firefighters coming in on Monday. We have 12 slated for the academy for January that are going through vetting. And this thing, this changes daily. I mean, we're onboarding people every single week.
And then, out of that 162, how many jobs are currently posted online?
I'd have to look. I mean, it changes daily, so it's available, lansingmi.gov/jobs.
Do you have a ballpark?
No, I said you can check. It changes daily. My specialists are working.
Okay.
I can look right now if you want. Or we can take more questions.
Let's see.
We have to be nice.
Okay. I think the issue is that sometimes when people look on there, there isn't a huge list when you look at how many vacant positions we have. So I think the question is, you know, and it could be that that was the last posting you did, but you still have vacant positions. Is there any way to make sure that those are also listed on there so that people, when they're looking, can look at those positions as well?
I think the problem that we would have for that, if we had vacant positions posted that are vacant positions listed that aren't posted, we're going to be getting questions, and there's going to be more time to fill, and people are, I mean, I think it could create some confusion. So I'm interested to see what you recommend or what you would, I mean, we can think about that some more, but I haven't thought about that.
Okay, thank you. I have Councilmember Brown, then Councilmember Spitzley, and then Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, President Wood. Thank you, guys, for being here today. I thank you for providing the information that you have. Understanding you have a process, you know, for everything that you've explained, my question was, is there a process, I guess, for prioritizing key positions? How do you all strategically do that for positions, such as, we've had a lot of concerns with constituents regarding the police investigator as well as the DEI officer?
Yes.
And I have a follow-up to that as well.
Okay, great. So department heads will absolutely send a priority request. I mean, some of them have lists that they've sent to us. If there's a high-priority position, as such as the Commission Investigator, that'll take precedence over others, depending on the list. So, I mean, I think that one was posted relatively quickly, and it's... So, I mean, that, I think that one was posted relatively quickly, and it's in the hiring process right now.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. And then to follow that, how long have we been without these particular roles?
Which roles?
With a person doing the service as DEI officer as well as the commission investigator?
I believe August was a DEI officer, but don't quote me, please. I'd, I'd have to go back and I can send a follow-up on that. And we have a contract worker that is helping out to keep things moving. The commission investigator, I'll have to check. I think that might have been July.
Okay, and so that's August of last year or August of this year?
No, this year, 2023.
Okay. And then lastly, is there a difference between the process, kind of still making sure that we're, you know, supporting the city, of course, but is there a difference between internal hires and external candidate hires as far as requirements to streamline the process when someone's already been vetted?
So, yes, internals don't go through as vigorous vetting as an external would. They're not doing the pre-employment physicals, they're not doing the background checks, because we're either making like a lateral, either a lateral move or a promotion. So that would be the difference. They're not going through as much vetting.
Okay, thank you. And then you talked about one person who does, who kind of hires for multiple jobs. You said it earlier. Could you kind of elaborate on that a little bit more, so I, I have a better understanding in the people, you know, as far as capacity, what you mean by that?
So every single specialist has, hires for more than one department. So we have our lead person, who is phenomenal, a 30-year employee that hires for the Lansing Fire Department, for Human Resources, for Human Relations Community Services, Parks and Recreation, Assessors Office, Treasury, and Public Service. We have another specialist who, whose focus is the Police Department. Also Economic Development and Planning, City Clerk, City Council, Office of the City Attorney, and Public Service, which is a, a big department, and she's amazing. Our third specialist has Departments of Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement, Information Technology, some of the administrative Lansing Police Department, the non-swornes, Finance, Public Service, Mayor's Office, and District Court, just for onboarding assistance.
So is that for efficiency, or would you say lack of capacity?
This is all hands on deck.
Okay.
To fill, fill these needs.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. So when you say, because I didn't understand the answer, when you say all hands on deck, does that mean you don't have a capacity issue, or, you know, I, because, because I think what we're really trying to figure out is, you know, as budgets come on, do we need to, as, as we put the budget in? So when Councilmember Brown asks, you know, you, you have multiple departments working with one person, for example, Public Service, I mean, I can't imagine how big that is. So, you know, I can't imagine one person doing that in other departments. And so when he, when he asked that, I think it's, it's a valid question of, is that a capacity issue? I get that you're, you know, you got, you have professionals there, and, you know, the staff is great, and, and I, you know, and for me, I want to say, you know, I've, I don't think I've ever implied that, that the staff is not hardworking, dedicated individuals. I don't think anybody up here has. We, we know they're great. What we don't know is if you need more of those great people. So when you talk about, you know, your amazing staff person who's dealing with public service, who's dealing with, you know, in addition to this, in addition to this, it sounds like a lot. But I haven't heard from you that, yeah, that sounds like a lot, I wish I had three more of her. You said it's all hands on deck, which I get, it, it would have to be. But do you need more bodies? Is that, is that more of a direct, do you need more bodies, is what I, is I think what we're asking?
I thought I addressed that when Adam brought it up for me, but to make it clear, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and, and maybe I wasn't, I wasn't listening. I apologize. Approximately, I know you said you're, is it-
So right now, so right now, we have two that are, one's transitioning to specialist, another is going to be onboarding. They're going to be training for a few months.
Right.
We have to train. And so I think I'll be able to, we will be able to assess in the next couple of months, and definitely going to make my request for the budget.
That's, that's a fair, I mean, I, I think that your department is critically important, and so we need to provide, make sure that we're providing as much support as possible. I think that sometimes it appears when we're asking the questions that we're trying to do gotcha. That, for me, that's not what I'm trying to, I'm trying to really figure out whether or not you guys need resources. Because if you, if you are fully staffed, then it's, it's almost like a trickle-down effect, that you, then everybody, everything else goes in. So it's, it's not a gotcha. I think it's just really trying to figure out and drill down what the issue is. But can I, can I pivot real quick to DEI, to DEI issues, if that's okay? I know, I know that at one point, you know, the DEI coordinator was hired, and this is, this is before you became director, one of the questions that I, that I've had, and I continue to have, and I'll ask you again, is, you know, we need to make sure that our diversity, equity, inclusive coordinator is involved in the hiring and the vetting, so that we have the most diverse applicant pool possible. I really liked what you said when you said you have a very diverse panel. I, I, and I think that's great. So I want to just kind of take that step forward and say, you know, it, to me, it's critically important to have that, that person whose focus is on making sure we have qualified diverse applicants. I'm not talking about diverse applicants, I'm talking about qualified diverse applicants. And to do that, sometimes, you know, it may require you to think outside of the box or look somewhere else. And so, you know, I'm always going to ask about, you know, where are we in, in, in respect of just making sure that our, our applicant pool is as diverse as possible? And then I know, and so when complaints come in through the departments, you guys handle that too. You know, is there, who is, do you have a person, do you have enough capacity to handle some of the complaints that, that come through from staff, to, to deal with that as well? Or is that, or is that the same as the HR specialist? Or do you have somebody separate that does that?
That's a whole different area of HR, and that's another position that we, I mean, that we need to look at for additional support.
Sure.
So that will, I mean, absolutely be in my request.
I mean, we want our, we want our, our workers to feel that they can come to you and have their complaints valid, at least listened, validated, and investigated, and I think that's almost important as, as, as a HR specialist, because we want to retain the employees that we have. And so if that's, if that's an area too, you know, that's something that we need to, to hear about as well.
Absolutely. I'm in agreement with you on that one. I do want you to know that when our HR specialists look at these processes, they're looking for barriers, they're making sure, as I said previously, the panel's diverse. We're looking at all aspects of the process, and these are issues they raise if they see it, and we address them.
Thank you, Councilmembers Spitzley. I have Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Brown, and Councilmember Acosta. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for being here. So I guess first, kind of like a statement, that it is, is clear that there are challenges in the hiring process overall with the city, and I only say that because of just the, however many years, definitely more than the last few, we've kind of like talked about this problem. There's so many vacancies in all the departments, including HR at the time. You know, police has their reasons, everybody has their reasons, but there's so many vacancies. So I'm glad to hear that there's a review going on with recommendations being implemented. But I guess to also piggyback on Councilwoman Spitzley's comments, what would you recommend for the city, or the council, or anybody that can help to make the process better? And by better, I mean filling vacancies quicker, because there's some that's there for a long time, there's some that, you know, takes applicants so much time to get through where they can't go that long and they go to another job. So if there's any recommendations that you have?
I think that's what we're currently working on. We're reviewing each process that goes through, and each process is so different. I mean, like for a UAW position, it's senior qualified. So a lot of times, those are filled relatively quickly. If there's assessments, if there's scheduling, I mean, there's all these different factors. I wish, you know, I wish everybody knew what it, what goes into the day-to-day. I mean, as a specialist is sitting, developing questions, they're reviewing them to, to make sure that they, they meet EEO guidelines and that they're doing their job in the best interests of the city, so.
Thank you. I was just, you know, trying to see what, because I know you have a lot of experience, like with the labor side and the HR side, and, you know, state experience, and just curious, you know, what the recommendations are. I know you said you implemented things already, but if you have some, when you guys have some, I think we would like to know.
So as to implementation, we've done several steps of the police process at the same time. We haven't, you know, waited to go to physicals after the psychologicals. So, you know, we've, there's several things that we've done, like consistently at the same time, and to try to shorten processes. We've had to modify and adjust schedules to accommodate interviews, so we can quickly get people through processes, especially for those laterals that are plug-and-play for police officers.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. I've got Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Brown, and Councilmember Acosta.
Yeah, sure, just a, just a quick, a couple of questions, because I think, you know, I, I actually, as we've, you know, kind of dragged the, the conversation out, I think there've been some great questions and some really good answers. I think really, we do have a capacity and process issue. I, I don't, what we don't have is a, a worker issue, meaning, I, I agree with Councilwoman Spitzley, I think there's a lot of input that is, is being generated. The question that becomes, what are, you know, there's actually a newsletter put out by the superintendent today, and I like how he phrased it, but what are the outcomes? What, what's the output? So I believe everybody's working hard, so I don't want anybody in HR thinking that we're challenging that aspect. With regard to, you know, the process piece, you did state that you were going to, or that you are actually in the middle of a, a process review in terms of hiring practices. What's the anticipated date to actually have that, that study done? Because I think we would love to have you back in to, to be able to, to hear about what you found and what some of the recommendations are moving forward.
I mean, we'd be happy to come back in about six months and let you know where we're at, but I'm not, not going to put a hard deadline-
Right.
-on analyzing all these processes and making change, because key is talking to our team. They do the day-to-day, and I want to make sure that their input is valued and it's taken into consideration before any decisions that we make, so.
Okay.
That's key.
All right, fantastic. The other piece is, you had a quick question, so when you have these, when you have a lateral move, you referenced lateral moves a number of times. And so, and, and obviously, a lot of that's driven by CBAs, and I, and I get that, and internal, you know, hiring practices and things of that nature. When we move somebody in a lateral way, obviously, we're creating a vacancy somewhere else. Is that then prioritized? Is that then immediately posted? Is the, I mean, take me through that process.
It depends on what the priority is for the other positions. If somebody moves to a lateral position, that then again goes to the pool of priority for the department. So is this a high priority position? There's, there's times where, I'll give you an example, so I have a payroll tech that is promoting into a hiring specialist. She's going to be helping us a little bit with payroll stuff to get us through while we get that posting ready to go. So, yes, that's a priority for us, because we don't have very many members of HR in specific divisions, because each of these, these 15 FTEs, they're all in different divisions. So, I mean, we encompass retirement, where we have one analyst, we have health and wellness, where we have one analyst, or one administrator, which those positions will be posted soon. Labor relations is one person. So payroll has-
Two now.
Two, and one of them's a part-time person.
Just, just one more. So as you were, as you were talking, I thought of another question. So if, if a director has, I don't know, seven, seven vacancies, let's take economic, economic development and planning, they're going to be asked to prioritize, correct? I guess I'm curious, because I do know that we have, we have some 162 vacancies, I think we have 24 that are posted right now. Has there ever been a time, and I'm just going to, I'm going to be, ask you to be candid here, has there ever been a time that you've been directed to keep a position vacant?
Directed to keep a position vacant?
Absolutely.
I don't think that would come up for me.
So, so if you have, as an example, if you have a departmental director coming to you and saying, look, I really need these seven positions filled, have you ever been directed, as an example, by a higher up, to know we are not going to fill X, Y, and Z?
I don't know if anybody's said we're not going to fill X, Y, and Z. I think they've said, these are my priorities.
Okay.
We're looking for the priorities to post. We're not, I'm not talking about, you know, others, because we, I don't have time to think about.
Well, yeah, and, well, and I'll, I'll say this, I hope they're all, you know, with regard to our departmental directors and our administration, I would hope these are all somewhat of a priority. I, I get that, there's a pecking order, I understand that, but these positions are funded positions for a reason. And so I hope that, that we're taking seriously the fact that all of these need to be posted and filled, or we have another conversation we need to be having.
So I will let you know that department directors are always at my door to fill positions. Always. I get calls, I get texts, I mean, and there's times where our capacity, I say, you know, that has to wait.
Okay. I've got Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Acosta, and Councilmember Spatacor.
Thank you, President Wood. Kind of answered my question already. My question was, where, you know, to Councilwoman Spitzley's questions was really, we, we were looking for a benchmark, and then what, what does it look like when we're, you know, in full capacity? So it sounds like you guys are going to have a report, say, this is where we are, these are the transformation that needs to take place, and this is what it looks like, you know, where at, you know, our, our dream department. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Acosta and Councilmember Spatacor.
So I, I did look up the number. It was 24, with four that are temporary employment agreements, so 1350 an-hour workers. So my question, I guess, is, you just said that you have department heads clawing at your door to get positions filled. Is there something that can be improved in the process of posting these? Because it looks like there's a pretty wide margin between how many vacancies we have and how many that are posted, and I do realize that some of them are, are multiple positions for the same thing.
So that's what we're currently looking at, the efficiencies. I, I don't want too many, too many out there posted, because then our specialists aren't going to be able to get to them, they're going to sit there posted, or they're going to close, and people have applied, and they're going to be wanting to know what's going on with the process, what's going on in the process. We don't want to have too much time between an interview and a, and either the skills and the BMQ, like, we don't want to have that big gap, because you have somebody on the hook thinking, okay, I applied to this position, I should be hearing about something, and you don't want to have that gap, because that would leave a bad taste of, you know, people of the city.
Do you, do you have a metric that measures how many people we're currently losing in this three-to-six-month hire process?
I don't have those current numbers with me. That wasn't part of the questions that I received.
But you'll-
Is that something you can get for us, please?
We can look into getting that information.
Okay.
Can you repeat your question?
Yes, it was, how many candidates were losing over this three-to-six-month period?
That have applied?
That have applied to the job and taken a different job. You call them, they say, I'm sorry, I took a, I'm already working at GM, or, well, not GM, but, but could be, anywhere else.
We can see if we can capture that information.
Thanks.
All right, I've got Councilmember Spatacor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Hussein said a number around 160. I totaled 137 FTE, somewhere between 140 and 160 FTE on our vacancy factor, and 24 postings currently. You've, you've mentioned you prioritize based on immediate needs and those types of incapacity. I get that, but I look at this list of vacancies that some date back three, four years. At what point is there a point at which we look at the list of vacancies in the city and say, that job isn't going to realistically be filled, should we remove it from as a funded position? Adam said, we have funded positions because they're important, but if they're not being filled, or they can't be filled, is there a process by which we determine vacant positions is no longer will be a position within the city?
That has not necessarily been on my radar at this point. I've, yeah, I haven't considered that. I think we're just busy trying to make sure we get people hired, but that's something we will actually...
The only reason I raise it is continually, we, we sit around this table and have budget discussions, and we make funding decisions based on priorities from us, from the mayor, from the community, and some of those priorities go unfulfilled because we're holding positions open, and it would be useful to know if some of those positions are never going to be filled, or if there is a glimmer of hope that some of those four-year-old vacancies will be filled, then it's worth keeping them funded. But there are other priorities that would be important to pay for as part of the budgeting process.
That's a good consideration.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think we have to be very, very careful, though, when we have that, that conversation. Just because something hasn't been filled in three or four years, and ostensibly we've gotten by, we hear from, I, I think it's worth acknowledging, we hear from many, 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 many people every single day of the week, that, you know, certain services that they expect as taxpayers certainly are not being fulfilled. And because I do believe that our City of Lansing workers work tirelessly, a lot of times I have to chalk that up to the fact that a lot of these positions are vacant. So just because, again, we've, we've gotten through the last four years doesn't mean we've gotten through the last four years the way that we want to get through the last four years. So we just have to be careful with that conversation.
I agree with that comment as well.
Just a couple of questions for you, Ms. Leary. One is, you had, part of the process of posting, have you worked with departments to see and with the retirement office, how many people have the potential of retiring in a year from that department, so that you can look at moving forward with doing some pre-work to have those positions possibly filled? Again, you know, we look at the fact that on the list there's police officer positions that have been open, and there's a date next to it. Doesn't mean that that one position has been open. What it means is that somebody could have gotten promoted, somebody could have retired, somebody, so you have police officer positions, but it's been since that date that when they started not being filled. It does not mean that that necessarily has been that one officer with badge number, blah, blah, that hasn't been filled.
Yes, I know of, specifically police, the chief tracks that so closely. And that's why we've been pushing these, you know, every single, I think there's Academy two times a year, and we're trying to fill spots in those academies. We've even had to go out to different academies that we normally wouldn't use to fill spots because we know that those, that 25-year mark is coming. And so that's absolutely a goal of ours, and it's closely tracked by departments as well. So I think it's a collaborative effort to make sure that we are, I mean, that's big on our priority list, the succession planning, it's huge, so.
Because, you know, I know we put in the budget for front-loading for police and fire, but that's not something that we put in for public service. That's not something that we put in for HR. But knowing that you have that potential, that someone could retire, and making sure that you're planning for that makes so much more sense.
I think that's what we, we actually, you know, I first came in this spring, and that was something that was on my radar, so I made a request, but...
All right. And then with the, as an example, with the UAW contract, doesn't, don't they have a provision in there for how long a position can be open, that they have to have that hired by?
They do, and the UAW has graciously worked with us. We speak to Dennis regularly, and he's also pushing to get those positions filled, and we're working with him on efficiencies as well.
And you'll hear me say this over and over again, and we're having the UAW down here tonight, and one of their issues that they have out there across Blue Shield and with the Big Three is contract positions. You know, I, I truly believe that we need to make sure that we are hiring and filling those positions instead of hiring contract. And then what we end up doing is having those contract positions on for a number of years when they should have been placed in and, and filled as a union position, so. Are there, yes, Vice President Garza.
All right, thank you, Councilperson, I appreciate that. Okay, so as I went on to the government jobs, job opportunities for the City of Lansing, I noticed that there are, there's 24 postings. Now, with the red tech crisis that we've talked about, you know, it's a big priority, I'm not seeing any, any postings for building safety, which I know there's three current vacancies, and as well as code, which we have a ton of vacancies in code right now. And so I guess I'm wondering why those are not here.
I can, I can provide an answer as to when we could expect those in writing.
Okay, thank you.
And I think the, the last thing, and I think you answered this already, but I do know that Local 421 with firefighters did put out some information that we actually had to take a station offline for four hours because we didn't have staffing for that. And you did indicate that you have, how many that are going to the fire academy?
25.
25.
They start on Monday.
All right. And what is the timeline from the time they're in the academy until graduation?
I can get that for you, but I also want to address the 421 posting that you saw, if that's okay? So in a conversation with the fire chief this morning, it's my understanding that the rig was taken out of service because there were several members of the fire department that were taking promotional exams that day for captain and battalion chief.
Oh, okay, but who schedules those exams?
We use a third-party consultant company called EmCo.
Okay, I would hope that they would look at the scheduling and making sure that our stations are fully staffed and can have people at those stations so that we don't close a station for four hours. So if we could have that discussion with them.
That would be better to have with the fire chief, but I just wanted to add that on, too.
All right, thank you. I saw that. Okay, anything else? Okay, one more question.
President Wood had mentioned contractual workers. I, and you probably don't have this number, could we get the number of contractual workers we currently have that are doing union jobs that have not been filled?
Sure.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you very much. We found your information very informative, and we'll look forward to getting the additional information that has been requested from you. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. That takes us to the Ovation Center. Dominic.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you could give us an overview of where things are with the Ovation Center.
Sure. First, I'd like to apologize for my voice. I'm getting over a cold, where I totally lost my voice, but I came back today, so that's good. Well, the first, the, the biggest, since I was last before council, the biggest piece of news in terms of an update is that we can now call it the MSU-FCU Ovation. So the credit union generously invested in our top naming right for $1 million to name the facility itself. So that's obviously the largest development since the last time I was before council. So very excited about that, and of course, that's attracted a lot of other interest and other leads. It's hoping for a little bit of a snowball effect. Once that top naming right comes in, then everybody wants to jump on board. So that was a really great development. Currently, we are focused on, I think if you recall, last time I was in front of you, we, we did develop a version of the project that, you know, we're calling kind of like the stripped-down, bare-bones version that could be built for all of the dollars that we have on hand. That's, of course, still the case, but I noted at that time that it was a priority for us to continue fundraising in order to enhance the project and truly make the best possible asset for our community. I'm of the opinion that, you know, the experience itself is really important. I think everybody will come and, and give a chance once to come see a new facility or something like that, but if you don't make the experience great and truly memorable, you will have a difficult time getting them to return. So to me, it's a priority to, to make that best possible version of the project, and that involves more amenities at the facility, higher-quality lighting and sound. So we are in the process of still filling that gap, and in the meantime, we are moving forward with the work that is common to both versions of the project. So you can imagine there's some things that would be the same no matter what sound system or lighting system you have. So some of that site work and everything that's still been happening since the groundbreaking, soil testing and all that, too. So another update is soon, we're going to be putting out an RFP for brand identity for the facility. So that will be nice to have that kind of thing to put out to the public, because we also have been getting a lot of inquiries from the public about, you know, how do I make a small donation of support? You know, not these big, the naming rights things for like the facility itself and the main stage and all those other things that we're approaching corporate dollars for, but just people that are fans of music that want to support the project with like a $50 donation or something. So once that branding identity is in place, probably after the New Year, we will start that kind of public fundraising campaign as well. And then a little timeline was one of the things that was in Sherry's email. The overall timeline, despite still hoping to, you know, raise some more money to enhance the project, we still are looking at opening in 2025, probably fall of '25. When you're confronted with the choice of opening in spring, summer, or fall for this kind of thing, fall is generally best, because students are back, you can generate more excitement that way. So those are the broad-stroke updates that I have.
Okay, you had mentioned that raising some additional money. The last we had heard, we were looking at a project that was $20 million. What is the price tag now?
So we still have the, the $20 million version of the project that we can move forward with, but it doesn't have as built-out of a mezzanine level, the second level, which is really popular in modern music venues. It's a shorter-height building, so wouldn't have as much of an impact on like the skyline or, you know. Another thing that I really love about this particular location is that it's truly a gateway to downtown Lansing. If you, if you're somebody who's coming from like Detroit or something to go to a convention at the Lansing Center, that's the exit that says downtown Lansing, and then you get off the highway and there's not really anything there. It's kind of like, oh, am I actually downtown? You know, so that's always kind of been a personal frustration to me. So to have a better presence for the city, to welcome people to the city right there in Washington is exciting, so. Sorry, that, that version of the project, the deluxe version, let's say, is 25.7 million. So it's...
So you're not coming to us for an additional...
No, no, the, the plan from the beginning and remains, the plan is that we will not be using any general fund dollars for this project at all.
And you won't be asking for, say, like a brownfield or any of those types of things?
Well, there is an existing brownfield on the block, the entire block is a brownfield plan, so I know that the leveraging that certainly would be great. The, the parts of the project that are involved in site cleanup and site prep, that certainly could be added to a brownfield reimbursement. And like I said, the whole, entire block is already a brownfield, so that would be great. That's, that wouldn't get us to 26 million, but that could be part of it. But no, there, there's no additional funding requests from the city. The, you know, we did pass, you passed the bonding capacity of 20 million, and the plan is the only amount of that that would remain on the books long-term after the doors are open is that amount which can be repaid by PEG fees, not general fund dollars.
As long as everything is successful.
Correct.
And I did see it, Councilwoman Spitzley, but I just had a couple more questions. One of the things that we had received from you was the fact that you had a sole source agreement that you were moving forward, and that's not something that this body has seen. So when do you intend to bring that sole source forward to council?
As far as I knew, I thought it was already in the process, I believe.
No, it's not, it's never been referred, but you have signed a contract in June for this sole source that should not have been signed until council acted on the sole source.
I think, I believe the city attorney's office brought it up to council to place it on file the day that...
That's not, that's not how it works, that goes through a referral to the clerk that gets on the agenda, that goes to Ways and Means, or in this case, it might have even come to committee of a whole to determine why we were going with one sole source contractor when we have a number of contractors throughout the, the city that have put up a number of buildings in this community.
So it's not the contractor, it's for the owner's rep?
It is for the owner's representative.
Yeah, I'll pull up the venue, or the memo right now.
Which was a sole source.
Yeah, so, so what I inquired about the process, I was told I had to write a menu, a memo to the mayor, and did that and sent it along, and as far as I know, it's been filed. I, I, I don't know how the rest of that happens. I was, I was asked to write a memo to the mayor regarding the justification for sole source, not for the contractor, for the, the person whose job it is to actually keep the contractor on time and on budget. Dimaxium is the owner's rep.
Again, there's still a process. You foiled the process. So in, in September, there was an email that went back out to Greg and to you, and there was no response about this memo and when it was going to be put in, in the clerk's office for referral.
And delivered to city council and to the clerk. And then it was informed later, from what I understand, that laser fees had to be utilized for this, and that's...
Well, okay, but it's still... And I appreciate that, but this memo we received on August 11th, and the contract was signed on June... On, where's the date on this, Sherry? It was signed on the 27th of June. So even getting the, the memo, this memo, you know, the contract shouldn't have been signed until after it went through the process. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What are we doing here?
Pardon?
I, I was just, did you need to jump in there, or?
I need to clarify something, even though, even though there's a data... That it was executed within the timeframe of the ordinance. That's correct?
No, we changed the ordinance that no sole source is supposed to be acted on before it comes to council. We've asked that question repeatedly. I have the chair of Ways and Means, I've been the chair of Ways and Means since we put that new section in, because we had issues with that before. This council remembers that we would have sole source come to us, and then we, we would say to them, "All right, when do you intend to start the work? The work's already done."
Yep.
So what was the purpose? So that's when we changed the ordinance. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So Dominic, what's, what percentage are we funded at this? I mean, I, I knew you... this? I mean, I know you're doing your fundraising, but where are we percentage-wise?
Excuse me. So it's, we're 100% funded for the project. The way that these kinds of facilities work is that, you know, every, it's a one-for-one result. Of every additional dollar we can raise, it's going to be, can go right into like the quality that you see when you walk in.
So when you say 100% funded, 100%, I apologize, I didn't mean to, I'm trying not to be mean, but when you say 100% funded, is that 100% of the 20 million?
Right. So of the, the kind of bare-bones version of the project.
Which is 18 million?
I believe it's 18.5 or 19, yeah.
Okay. And so you're continuing, I'm just trying to make sure, you're continuing to fundraise, hoping to get to the 25.7?
Yeah. It only gets better from here, basically. So we're just trying to, in my opinion, we have one shot to get this right. So it's kind of, you know...
When you talk about, I get that, thank you. When you talk about that the block is a brownfield, so what is, I mean, I'm trying to wrap my head around, what does that mean? If, even though the block is a brownfield, don't you still have to apply for a TIF or a tax increment funding thing? I mean, I get that the, that the block is a brownfield, but, so the question is, are, do you anticipate coming back here for any kind of tax increment financing as a result of the block being a brownfield?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, I think that, you know, the brownfield is a tool that gets used for private developments all the time. I mean, I think it would be fantastic to leverage it for a public asset as well. I don't know how that has to work in terms of an amendment or whatever, but I don't know the answer to the question.
Okay, so I would prefer that. You don't know the answer. I would prefer you to say, I don't know, because me, it sounds like, because you were throwing out that it was a brownfield block that you, that you felt that you would automatically be, you know, that you would automatically getting them. But that's why I was asking.
Yeah. I'm assuming there has to be like an amendment and all that to the plan for all that. Yeah, I'm assuming that and I'm guessing. But no, it's not taken for granted, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
I'm confused a little bit. For the city attorney's office or somebody, is this, this isn't a public-private partnership, correct? This is a wholly-owned city facility?
Yes.
And the land is city property? We bought that?
Yes.
So there'd be no taxes paid on, correct? So no brownfield eligibility at all? Okay. Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Because they're not, brownfields are where they pay into the taxes, and then when there is money that they have utilized to clean up the brownfield, we pay it back to them out of the taxes that they gave us because they paid the money upfront.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Yes, councilmember.
Well, and so that was going through my mind as we were having this conversation as well. Were you contemplating some situation where there would be taxes to actually capture as part of, because that's exactly what we do. We capture taxes and then we...
Yeah.
...for eligible activities.
Again, this is my unexpert perspective, but I think that one of like the ideas, the possibilities was that the taxable activity is happening in the other 75% of the block, all those apartments.
Okay. All right. No, you can't, you can't take somebody else's tax.
Okay, yeah.
Well, that's why I was wondering. That's why I was asking.
There's been a lot of ideas thrown around about how to raise funds.
Fine, but you did your pants. Okay. Yes.
And I just, and I just want to be clear. So what you're telling us, last time I did the math, it was just south of 18. We had $7 million from the state, we had $1 million from MSU FCU, we had $750,000 from the feds, we had $700,000 in donations, and we had $8.5 million in upfront, at least that's the number you gave us in terms of upfront cable fees. What you're telling me is we've raised another $1 million since, since that time, because we're sitting at about almost 19 million now. So I'd like to know where that money came from.
Yeah. Sorry, the sources add up to more, it is 18.5, not 19. And it's the rest of the, remember, the plan was for the private fundraising component to raise anywhere from $5 to $7 million. So there's, there's like a whole list of the naming rights, right? So we have achieved a certain percentage of that. I don't have it right in front of me, but it's not just the main one. So there's other people that have come along, too.
And so it's like, I think it's almost two total. Okay. Well, I think this is what I want to be clear on. So the elevation in terms of what we originally discussed and what we could potentially be looking at now with regard to some 26, $27 million development, that is, that's a symptom of not the fact that, oh, shoot, this project is a lot more expensive than we thought it was, as much as there's several different things we could do. That was always the plan. And we're just looking at, because we've been so successful here, we're looking at potentially being able to, I mean...
Just making it as good as it can be. Yeah, yeah. So that, so that's where I left you last time, was just that we're going to go back to work and keep trying to make this project better as long as we can do it. Until, you know, a certain point during construction, you can't make changes, but...
Have you, I guess the other thing is, we're always worried about, and we understand there'll be some revenues and additional peg fees, things like that. We're always worried about maintenance and upkeep. And so I'm curious as to what types of studies you all have done in terms of what that capital outlay is going to, will have to be in not only the near, but the long term. But then also, you had spoken to an idea of an endowment. And I'm curious if you have continued to study that, if you've looked at practicality of that, the potential for that. What, you know, what kind of information do you have for us?
Yeah. So any amount that we can keep as an operating endowment would be fantastic. But the pro forma as it exists does contemplate maintenance and upkeep and upgrades the facility over capital investment. So it's a, it's a capex allowance out of the monthly revenue, like a certain amount that just goes into a capex account that would then be tapped, you know, five, 10, 15 years down the road when those major maintenance items start coming up. So with that existing pro forma, we do contemplate operating in the black and also being able to keep some money aside for future capex.
Okay, I'm going to wrap this up because we have a couple of other items we need to get to. I would expect at the next committee of a whole meeting on the 30th, well, at the next council meeting on the 30th, that there is the referral for the sole source. I don't care who puts it in, how it gets there, but it needs to follow the process and go through the clerk's office. So if it's a matter that it didn't get put into laser fish, then whoever needs to get it in there, get it in there.
Okay. Did you want any discussion on the actual memo itself and the justification?
No.
Okay.
Not at this point.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. All right. With that, the next, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have is the resolution for the reappointment of Deshaun Leek, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I would move the reappointment of Deshaun Leek as the third ward member of Lansing Board of Water and Light, term to expire June 30th, 2027.
All right. We have a motion. Are there any questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I'll just say my piece, and it's nothing personal to Mr. Leek because I know he's a fantastic person and servant, and I commend anybody who volunteers for a serious board like that. But like last time, I don't think that our commissioners in general have the specialized training or experience or education to implement plans to meet the climate goals that they have set forth. And just to be on point, about a month or two ago, I went to the Board of Water and Light meeting that had the results for the all-purpose capacity boost, where they just put out, said whoever can help us increase our capacity, we want to hear it. And I heard a presentation about 120 good applicants came in with good ideas, and they explained how they narrowed it down. And then they basically said, and here's who we chose, to the board. And then the concerns was there was no public input. The concerns was that the board didn't have any say. And the general manager basically said, because I was appointed by you all, I basically have the ability to make decisions. So the thing I had is that there was no, none of the board people had any comments or questions about any of those very serious results that came in. They were talking about, you know, whether it's battery storage or whether it's different solar projects. Those were the type of decisions that were already made when it was supposed to be just the general, here's what's going on, and I hope there was some public comment. But there wasn't. So I'm just kind of voting no for the reappointment. For the same reason I vote for the other no reappointments is just because we need specialized training and people who are going to be able to push towards the climate goals that the board has. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I would hope that you would be at the Board of Water and Light meeting, our joint meeting, and so you can make some of those comments there. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say that I support 100% Deshaun Leek and people on board, usually comprised of different individuals with different skill sets. And then the administration or operational side of an organization has expertise. And I believe that you need expertise to deliver a service and look, you know, to the future. But a board should be comprised of people of the community with different perspectives to ensure that collectively and overall, we move entity forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion before us. All those in favor of the reappointment, say aye.
Aye.
Hoes?
Hoes.
And this will be on the council agenda this evening. We do have, so this is up to the body. We, it is 10 minutes to seven. We do have the additional information on the warming and cooling centers, report on the stumps. We did receive some additional feedback on the scheduling. So Sheri's going to work with Chris on that. And then we have the ordinances. Would you like to wait on these to the next council meeting so that we can take these up and have better discussion? Is that what I'm hearing? That heads are going up and down? Okay. As long as we got heads going up and down. Thank you. Then with that, we will be adjourned for 10 minutes, and then we will go into our council meeting. We now stand adjourned.